Get the broken chair again.
You got the, you got the trick.
Get the trick chair again. What the trick chair?
I write on it.
Monday night.
Uh, can I have another one here for this?
It's leaking. Alright.
Okay, already feeling the summer buzz, anyone? Is heat? I'd like to call the meeting to order.
We have a roll call?
Mr. Capadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston. Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Schlotman? Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
Dr. Lou? Do we have a quorum?
Wonderful, thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having dates, the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board does reserve the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of Board review, future reference, participation, uh, preparation of the minutes and viewing of, on YouTube, excuse me, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, hdrsd.org. Meeting members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking at the podium. This will assist us in, uh, with our other record keeping. That said, please join me in a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I get a first and second for approving the minutes for the May 20th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, minutes are passed. Um, I'm going to, uh, pass on my report. Dr. Treese, do you have any notes in your report?
I'm just gonna say a few words to, um, say thank you to my, um, my administrative team, all my administrators, my teachers, all our support staff for getting us through another great school year. Everyone's gearing up for summer. We have, um, as a matter of fact, we have some folks missing tonight because we are double booked with senior awards tonight. Um, but we're very excited, uh, to have, uh, a class of 2024 graduate tomorrow on the turf field, hopefully, weather permitting. Although the field is very hot right now, I'm hearing. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that. Um, but just, we've had a great year and I want to thank our parents, our caregivers, who also support us. Um, I really am going to save time giving a long, um, report tonight because we have, uh, Marion Freeman here who led us in our strategic planning for the next five years and she's going to share the results of that work. Uh, but again, I think all the, the folks that came showed up for that as well. It's very important that we have a community input. In the past, we've kind of set ourselves in rooms and had staff members and the board do that. I wanted to have all the community weigh in, even folks that don't have, uh, students in the district were able to participate. So, thank you for volunteering your time. I know we're all very, very, very good at speaking and we've had lots of people talk. Yeah, quite a turnout, uh, quite impressive. So, without further ado, I would pass off to you.
Okay, can every, I guess you can hear me. So, thank you, thank you for being here tonight and for welcoming me tonight. And, um, thank you all for being here as well. I see familiar faces of people who were at the strategic plan. So, I facilitated the strategic planning process along with Mark Bon Giovanni, who was helpful, um, in the three different meetings. And, um, I know he was going to try and make it tonight, but I'm guessing that he might not have been able to. So, what strategic planning really is, it creates an organizational wide mission and vision that really directs and motivates your stakeholder groups and inspires all members of the educational community to work together for the common good. And so, not everybody does, not every district does a strategic plan. And when a district does embark on a strategic plan, it's really to make sure that they are asking for all of their stakeholder groups to have input. And then the important, the most important part in that is not only to ask people to have input, but then to listen to what they have to say. And so, that's what strategic planning does. So, strategic planning goals provide a waterfall effect and they will inform the district goals that, and board goals that are done on an annual basis. They're usually developed over the summer. And then administrators' goals and building goals, department goals, student growth objectives, staff professional development, and all of that flows into improving student achievement for all students. And we call this our strategic planning pyramid. And the commitment going up the side of the pyramid is the commitment of the board, again, to not only to have invited their stakeholder groups in, but to listen to what they have to say. So, the first meeting, we had an informa, we had information on the state of the district, the state of the schools by Dr. Treese. And then the small groups developed strengths and challenges, identified strengths and challenges, and then reported out. And then we had, um, we developed, identified common themes as the large group. The second meeting was vision and initiatives. And we asked people to consider that they had moved away from Hopewell Valley and Hopewell Township. And they had come back five years from now and had stopped at Owawa. And to get gas, they went in to get coffee. And they saw that Hopewell Valley School, Regional School District was on the cover of Time Magazine. And it was the title of the article, "The Schools That Succeed." So, what would create the kinds of programs and vision that you all would have that would put you on the cover of Time Magazine in five years? So, each small group came up with vis, a vision statement and initiatives. And then we all, reported out. We also came to consensus on the, um, common themes from that. At that meeting, goals, um, goal areas were identified. And in the third meeting, you were able to go to whatever goal area you wanted to work on and goals and objectives were identified. And then from that, each small group reported out. We had consensus on those goal areas and objectives. And after that, the administrative team took all of the information from all of the different strategic planning sessions and put those together and developed strategies and action plans. And so, tonight is the culmination of all of this process. But it's only the beginning because now the action plans will go into effect. So, again, we had the state of the schools report in the presentation, identified strengths and challenges the first meeting, developed vision and initiatives and goal areas at the second meeting. Third meeting, developed those goal statements and those objectives further. The action plans are, were developed by the superintendent and the administrative team. The strategic plan is delivered to the board, that's what's happening now. The board will adopt the final strategic plan. They may do that tonight or at an upcoming meeting. And then the, once they've adopted the, the final strategic plan, the action plans will be implemented by the superintendent and the administrative team. And the strategic plan really does become a framework for everything that's going to happen in the next three to five years by the board and by the district. Your planning meetings, you had a fabulous turnout. And if we had had the January meeting, which we had this, we had to cancel because the school was closed because of bad weather, we probably wouldn't have dropped to 40 participants on April 9th. And I think we probably would have had, we had 67 people participate on February 6th, which was a fabulous turnout. I believe it was raining that night. I think on March 12th, it was also raining. And there were 60 participants that attended that, so the weather didn't keep you all from coming out. And then April 9th, we had 40 participants. That was a wonderful turnout. And Board of Education members, the superintendent, administrators, teachers, staff, students, parents, and community members really volunteered their time and contributed to the development of this plan. And as I said, I can't say enough, this plan will literally guide the board and the district with everything they do over the next three to five years. So, your mission statement is, "The Hopewell Valley Regional School District strives to foster excellence in education by empowering our students to positively impact the global community through a commitment to responsibility, respect, and kindness." The goal areas that were identified were student learning, autonomy, facilities and finance, health and wellness for students, staff, and families, communication and community partnerships. And we're gonna take those a little bit further. This was what was identified and developed on that third meeting. So, student learning autonomy, the goal is to empower students through a rigorous education to develop skills for a lifetime of self-directed learning. The objectives are to provide students with opportunities to explore a variety of curricular pursuits, particularly in middle school, increase experiential learning, especially in the primary grades, create opportunities for eco-literacy and outdoor learning, strengthen and vary student supports to increase their mobility and access more with, and access more advanced class courses, and develop student competencies in digital literacy, critical thinking, and problem solving. The second goal is facilities and finance. Build and implement a fiscally responsible budget that supports student wellness and learning and facilities that can adapt to a changing climate. And the objectives are to identify the top three cost drivers and investigate cost-saving alternatives. And I know that the district does that on a regular basis through the business administrator. Include green building options and ROI return on investment for any future facilities, improvements, and new construction. Increase funding for curricular writing and planning for cohesive instruction throughout the building and the content areas. Prioritize a cohesive district-wide effort to expand and maintain outdoor learning spaces and employees in a cost-effective way. And build and improve buildings to provide reliable and safe infrastructure for daily operation. The third goal is communication. To evaluate and modernize communication methods to generate more interactive engagement between students, parents, and community. And this will be accomplished through the objectives which are to increase opportunities for students to, students to communicate off-screen, workshops, Socratic, and discussion. Reassess traditional communications for the 21st century effectiveness. Example, back-to-school night, student-led conferences, and student newspaper. Evaluate the capability of AI-generated communication for personalized output. Streamlining various current communications. Example, Friday Focus website, school individualized pages, teacher pages, and sports page. And the question was, can there be a way to possibly combine those and develop a communication style guide for the district? The fourth is health and wellness and to develop a community of health. Develop a proactive health and wellness program that integrates the full spectrum of community well-being. Increase physical health of all through integration of community members through healthy eating, proper exercise and sleep. Increase digital awareness and health. Use, utilize digital literacy curricula, social media health, and offline communication skills. Prioritize mental health through district-wide initiatives to go outside. Lessen screen time and regularly and frequently connect with nature. Prioritize and celebrate community connectivity and unity. Financial health, learn about responsible spending, saving, and giving. And celebrate the arts through social collaboration by way of community and family partnership to develop a community of health. And the fifth goal area is community partnerships. And this goal is to bridge students and residents of Hopewell through community engagement and services to enrich student learning and opportunity. Through the objectives of hiring a paid community liaison to foster and create reciprocal relationships between the school communities and individuals, entities, businesses, nonprofits, and universities. Increase engagement with the alumni. Engage community experts in the area, including but not limited to healthy tech use, sustainability, and eco and social justice, and career development. Recast schools as a community hub, not just for students, but for all residents. And create opportunities and locations for unstructured play and community connection. Needless to say, these are five very specific goal areas. And the objectives are very far-reaching. This is going to be a gigantic strategic plan for you all to accomplish. And the administrative team and the superintendent put together the action plans, which are actually in the board presentations that you have. And so, what will happen next is that the board will review and adopt the strategic plan. The administration will implement the plan. And then you'll have updates on the progress towards the completion of the strategic plan, both at board meetings, items on the board agenda, an annual state of the strategic plan report, which we highly recommend to happen every year. It can be at this point in time in June, or it can be in September. And then the final plan will be posted on the district website following the board approval so that everybody can follow along as well. Because with the action plans, everyone will be able to see what's happening next and what has already happened. And so will the board. And that will also be pointed out in the annual state of the, of the district, the strategic planning report. And I do want to make sure that everybody's aware that the action plans actually belong to the superintendent and the administrative team. You can ask questions about them, but you should not become involved in changing those action plans or directing the superintendent to change those action plans. Because remember, you're going to be evaluating the superintendent every spring. And part of that is going to be on how the superintendent accomplishes the district goals, which will flow from the strategic planning goals. So, you'll see those strategic planning goals and action items within the strategic plan in your annual district goals. And that's what you'll evaluate the superintendent on. If the board were to become involved in changing those action plans, you can't hold the, the superintendent accountable for completing those action plans and getting to the desired objective, which is the completion of those goal areas and those objectives. Okay? So, I'd really like to thank everybody. These are your kids. Um, thank you for participating, your time and your talents in helping to create the strategic plan for the Hopewell Valley School District. And if the board has any questions, I would be happy to, to take those.
Any questions from the board?
I know we had quite a lot of participation at each meeting. And I feel like we got a, a diverse representation of board and community at, um, each of the meetings. So, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for your leadership through this process. Your firm voice was warranted and needed. Um, because these are big things to, uh, take on. And I know that the, the end result is we had not only strong participation, but I'm, I'm affirming that people felt well-represented in the end result.
And I think you had students that were involved. You had people from all different aspects of your community. And I think that that really helps to develop that community plan. And it's also the reason why, and I know some people didn't particularly enjoy this for that first and second meeting where I gave you assigned tables to be at. It was all completely random. But the goal there was to have you not necessarily sit with people you came in with, people that you know who think and, and feel the same way and have the same opinions that you do. But to be exposed to other people within your community who may have different opinions. And then you still are able to come to consensus at the end of that evening with the outcomes for your table and then by sharing those with the rest of the larger group. Because if you just, if you come in with four or five other people and you all sit together at one table, you're not really hearing what other people in your community are representing, what their views are, what their opinions are, and what their, um, vision is for the district and for your students. So, in that way, as difficult as it is, and I often say to people, I promise I've never lost anybody in a strategic planning meeting. Nobody's ever fallen apart because they couldn't be with anybody. Um, and kids are usually the best because a lot of times the parents come in and they like, I'd like my son or daughter to be with me. And the student usually says, "I'm okay being someplace else." And, you know, it exposes them also to what other people think. And I think that's a wonderful thing that really allows you to see the full flavor of your community. And this plan really does represent what everybody came up with, everybody's views and opinions, and what was decided by the larger group as a whole. And I think it's going to further improve the district. It's not that you're a struggling district in any, you know, by any stretch of the imagination. But we've seen strategic plans transform even the best districts into even better districts. So, that's what I anticipate for you. I look forward to working with you through this plan and being your, I'm hopeful to be your field service rep throughout this plan. So, hopefully, this is not the last time that I will see you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening, have a good graduation tomorrow night. I hope nobody melts and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, it, it is very challenging to, uh, take a group of 40 to 60 people and convince them that they don't need as many goals as they think they do. So, I know, I know we, we negotiated an extra one. Usually it's four, somebody negotiated five.
I think what I said was, this is what we're gonna have. We don't do four.
So, the reason that, that we don't want you to have more than five goals is because the superintendent and the board need to be laser-focused on those areas. When you have more than five, and I may have shared with you, when I first started at New Jersey School Boards, I had just come off of my Board of Education. And our superintendent called me when I was driving into Trenton and, to the Trenton office. And she said, "We did goal-setting last night." And I said, "Oh, did you have Kathy, who is the field service rep from Ameth, come in and do your, facilitate that?" And she said, "No, the board president wanted to do it themselves." And I said, "How did that work out for you?" Because I knew who that person was. And she said, "Well, I now have 35 goals." I said, "You can't possibly have 35 goals and give each of those the laser focus and operate the district on a day-to-day basis." Because remember, your superintendent has to be laser-focused on these goals, but also has to operate the district. And so, I said to her, "Try and take a look at all of those. They're probably not goals, they're probably more objectives. See if you can put them into four or five buckets and then create an overarching goal for those." And she did that. She called me back the following week. She said, "I now have four goals. I can breathe again, I can sleep again, and the board is happy with that." So, that's why we always talk about, and the three to five came well before me at New Jersey School Boards. But I like to give that example because people don't really understand that the superintendent is in charge of having that laser focus on all of these goals, but also has to operate the district. And so, you can't do that when you have 36 or 35 or whatever that number is. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Um, I just wanted to add, um, that on, uh, in our next board meeting, July 15th, the, uh, Carol McGrath will be coming with our eco warriors and all our, our friends that have been working on a plan for, uh, sustainability that is gonna be its own separate thing. Um, so, if you didn't see all the things that we have been talking about for the past three years as board members and students and, and, uh, community members have said on that, you will see it. But it will complement a lot of what we're doing here. So, thank you on facilities.
Take care, Marion.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, um, to move us through our agenda, we're going to move into public, our first public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for the ma, a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may, uh, respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking at the podium. This will assist us in our record-keeping. Um, do you have any time directives there?
So, I am the timekeeper. So, you have three minutes, as, uh, Ms. Williams-Galliano said. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll hold up the yellow sign. And then when your time is done, you'll see a red sign.
Thank you. Public comment is now open.
Good evening. Uh, Ridgely Hutchinson, 50 Manary Village Road, Lambertville, New Jersey. I'm here as president of True Heart Productions and executive producer of The Price of Silence documentaries. I'm here today to thank the board for approving the addition of our documentary to the high school history curriculum. From the beginning, when we established our nonprofit organization, we had two goals. One was to get the film added to the programming schedule of public television. And the second one was to get the films added to school curriculums across New Jersey. You have helped us complete our mission. At a time when throughout our country and even in New Jersey, there are not only individuals, but entire organizations working to limit students' knowledge of our nation's history, you have made the bold step of doing the exact opposite. I'd especially like to thank Dr. Treese for her keen eye in recognizing a quality film with a topic that is worthy of the board's consideration. And Dr. Vicky Politis for facilitating the process and helping to move it forward. Surely, most of the district's residents would agree that the school system is in good hands and very fortunate to have your leadership. I'd also like to thank Darren Luan, Leslie Silverman, and Jeffrey Newman from the History Department for their hard work and professional approach to developing the lesson plans that will be the guiding light for the students to learn this important segment in our nation's history. And lastly, if you don't mind, and I can see I have time, I'll take just one more minute of your time. The board's approval of these films is very meaningful for me on a personal level. I grew up just two blocks away from here on Skid Street. My father was an English teacher here for 43 years. When he started teaching, when he moved here from Trenton, he taught here and was able to go home for lunch and be back in time for his next class. So, I'm certain that if my father was still with us, he'd be especially proud to have been part of this school system. Thank you for your time.
Sorry. Wonderful, thank you.
Hello, my name is Mac Harcell. I live in Hopewell Township. Um, I'm non-binary, my pronouns are they/them. I'm currently a senior at the high school and student advisor of the high school's gender and sexuality line, Spectrum. I'd like to start by saying that pride is a year-round experience. And in the words of LGBTQ+ activist Harvey Milk, "All young people, regardless of sexual orientation or identity, deserve a safe and supportive environment in which to achieve their full potential." Spectrum works year-round to create these safe and affirming spaces, spaces for queer youth at school. And I'm so grateful to have had a staff advisor and school administrators that work with us on this goal. And I am also extremely grateful to have had a district that supports the hosting of events like LGBTQ 301 and Spectrum's yearly pride celebration that promote diversity, inclusion, and acceptance of all members of our community. It is so important that we have conversations about the LGBTQ in all areas. This includes the perspectives of parents, schools, faith spaces, and many other facets of life. We deserve to be included in those spaces. And it is important that schools are supportive of each aspect of a student's identity, regardless of any other identities they may hold. Support in all areas saves lives. And the discussions held at LGBTQ 301 addressed these topics in a way that was inclusive of diverse beliefs and backgrounds. And I really appreciate the district for letting us hold this event at the high school. It is also extremely important that schools hire accepting educators and administrators and support them in creating these safe spaces at school. I attended the educator panel at LGBTQ 301. And many of the speakers there shared that they feel supported as staff here at Hopewell in both their LGBTQ identities and in having conversations about them. According to the Trevor Project, 41% of LGBTQ youth had seriously considered suicide in the past year, which includes nearly half of non-binary bisexuals. which includes nearly half of non-binary bisexual and trans youth. This number increases significantly among queer youth of color and disabled queer youth. Supportive and affirming school environments can reduce suicidal ideation by nearly forty percent compared to non-affirming environments. And I cannot express how thankful I am to be surrounded by adults that show their support so openly and so proudly. There are so many queer kids across the U.S. who should still be in school doodling on their math tests and stay out and up late studying for them. There are so many queer youth who should be graduating with me this year but are not because of the horrible things happening in other school districts. Many schools across the country have become hostile environments for their LGBTQ students, banning books that talk about people who love each other or telling students they're not allowed to use the bathroom or play sports or outing them to their unsupportive families. I, I think we should encourage positive interactions between people of different perspectives and pass along opportunities to grow and learn all of the various ways there are to exist. These kids deserve to have positive experiences with their, uh, sorry, these kids deserve to have positive experiences with diverse beliefs and perspectives and they should be allowed to love and express themselves as they please. All queer people deserve to have positive experiences with their identities in school.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Kristin Broderick. I am, um, a parent to children in the district. I am a licensed mental health professional and a co-founder of ECO PTO. Uh, I just want to reintroduce ECO PTO. We are a district-wide group of caregivers, community members, and school district personnel passionate about taking care of the earth and taking care of each other. Our mission is as follows. Ensure students in the district receive a public education that prioritizes eco justice within the curriculum and within the school day. Said more simply, we use the term eco justice synonymously to again, taking care of the earth and taking care of one another. A primary motivation for this non-traditional PTO group came as a result of the Surgeon General's Mental Health Advisory released in twenty-twenty-two in conjunction with the twenty-twenty-three advisory on the epidemic of loneliness and isolation. In both reports, he highlights the need for a whole-of-society approach and states that schools and communities have a strong role in making things better for our youth, just as Mackenzie shared. Our mission is supported by research that proves time and time again that learning to love nature and connect with the outdoors is what actually improves students' mental health, social well-being, physical health, and academic success. What a bang for our buck. As a new organization, however, and one different from the traditional PTO, ECO PTO is very much still learning how to communicate and engage with the district to successfully partner together on such important matters. I want to thank Dr. Trese for taking time out of her day last week in an effort to ensure we are, we are being most effective in our communication with the district personnel and our overall strategy is positive. And to thank everyone here tonight and beyond, uh, we, or to everyone tonight and beyond, we thank you for such a unique opportunity and we are excited for you to join this ambitious yet rewarding journey.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Do you have any notes?
I do. Um, first, I want to thank, uh, Ridgely for, one, letting us use your film. Um, he let us use, I saw the film, a screening of the film over at the theater in Hopewell. I was invited, um, by Beverly Mills and Elaine, um, uh, Beverly Mills and Elaine Buck, who are historians and they also have opened the, um, first African-American museum in Mercer County, the only one in Mercer County. Um, they and several other very prominent historians were, were featured on the film. Uh, we saw the screening here at the theater and he said, he approached me and said, would you mind screening the film? I'm like, yes, of course I would screen the film. Uh, if you haven't gotten the opportunity to see it, it was screened in two parts on, um, PBS. So I believe that you could still access it. Can you get it online? Yes, get it on the website as well. Um, and you're working on your next film, which we're excited to be a part of. And we're, our teachers were so pleased to be able to help you with the unit of study, which we have adopted as a district and will be using, um, the film as well. I learned a lot about the history. I had no idea of the, um, the extensive nature of slavery here in New Jersey and that we were the last state in the North to give it up, well beyond the other states of the North. Um, that was, that was history that I didn't know and I learned a lot and so did our teachers. So we thank you and value the partnership moving forward. Um, for Matt, I thank you so much for your comments. Did I pronounce your name correctly? Was Matt right? Yes. Um, thank you so much for your comments and of course, we're going to continue to partner with you. When I was studying, uh, for my doctorate, one of my assignments was to go somewhere where I was a minority. Right? And so I was like, well, where is that? Everywhere I go, I'm a minority. And I thought really hard about it and I said, you know what? I'm going to go to a pride fair. So my husband and I looked online and it was, of course, after New Hope and all the ones here. So I had to travel to Reading, Pennsylvania. And yes, Reading, Pennsylvania, there. Uh, for pride to happen. And so we went out there and, um, it was such a moving experience for my husband and I, the young people that were there, and this was years ago. Uh, the high school was just becoming a safe haven for students that identified as members of the LGBT community. Um, they, uh, some of the students had dropped out because it was so bad. Um, and they couldn't even talk to me because I was walking around interviewing students. But what was most powerful was there was a group of folks called Guardian Angels that were not members of the LGBT community. It was started by a mother who attended a funeral. And she went to the funeral and people that were protesting, um, someone who had died, a, a member of the LGBT community, were actually protesting at the funeral. And she was so turned off by it that she decided to start this group. And they basically came to any pride event, um, for free. And they would all come with rainbow umbrellas. They would face, they would make a circle around the pride celebration, turn their backs to the pride celebration and open the umbrellas. And they would just engage in, um, positive interactions with the protesters to say, you can't come in this space. Um, so from that moment on, I decided that if I were ever permitted to be in this seat, that that was going to be a priority of mine because it's something that I honestly hadn't really thought of as being something I needed to be a champion for until I, until I had to experience that. Um, so that's, that's my commitment because I, I want to honor everyone who's here, both not just students, but some of our parents as well. And, and there's not one of us that doesn't have a family member. Right? Um, so I, it's the right thing to do and I'm glad that we have a board that, that is in support of that. And then finally, to Ms. Broderick and our ECO PTO, I'm so excited to work with you. And we've actually decided to schedule regular meetings so that we can work together, um, because they are non-traditional and outside of the box from the way a lot of our PTOs work. Um, so we're, we're definitely looking forward to make sure that we're staying on track on our ECO mission. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. With that said, we will close our, uh, first public comment. And thank you all for lifting your voices. Uh, moving on, I would ask for a first and a second to approve the consent agenda items on the agenda. Anybody? Anybody?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Gotcha. Okay, so, sorry, little, uh, conversation here on the agenda. We're going to go out of order on the agenda briefly because we, um, have a unfortunate announcement to make. At least, I will personally say I'm, um, sad to hear the announcement, but I will, um, turn it over to Dr. Lydia Liu and, um, you'll understand my disappointment momentarily. Um, and I'll have comments following that.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, dear Board President, Ms. Williams Galliano, Dr. Trese, the rest of the board members, district administrative leadership team, and our community. I wanted to share that I turned in my resignation as of last Friday as a board member. Our family is moving to another town and therefore I'm no longer eligible to serve as a board member on our, um, school boards in our district. Over the last eighteen months, I've had the incredible honor, truly incredible honor, to work very closely with a group of amazing board members, Dr. Trese and your leadership team and the entire community. The learning is tremendous on my part. I get to understand all the thoughtfulness and delicate balance that goes into the creation of the academic programs, the selection of contractors, the development of district policies, and also the art and science of blocking in the academic, um, calendar. Every single decision looks not that complicated on its own. But when it needs to be made considering the constraints of budget, compliance with state mandates, strategic priorities of our district, and most importantly, the interest of our students, every decision, every decision then becomes complicated and difficult. I truly applaud the administrators and educators in our district for always putting our students' needs first. In the spirit of making a greater district even better, there are two things I was hoping to, to raise as opportunities for growth. One is on diversity and inclusion. We are doing an amazing job, but there are places where we could do even more. For example, as our student body gets more diverse, let's think harder about how to serve their needs. If they don't come to us, are there ways that we can be more proactive and reach out to them? Looking, sometimes in our board meetings, I always look at the audience and wonder, why don't we see more representatives from our Asian community? Because it's a, we have a growing Asian population in our district. Are there things we can do to attract more participation in the public activities? Anything that we can do to encourage the students to come to the podium and share their thoughts and hopes? Anything we can do to encourage more parents to come to our meetings and share the issues that matter to them? Um, one thing that we can think of is every May, we have the APA, um, Heritage Cel- Celebration Month. Are there activities we can sponsor to make sure that the community, especially the Asian community, feel engaged and appreciated? And offer opportunities for us to recognize the Asian, uh, heritage and cultural conventions? The other thing I wanted to bring up is how to double down on the strategic planning to make sure our kids have the skills they need for the future. Um, I was really happy to see the strategic planning and also Marion's presentation. Academics are still very important, but also critical thinking, collaboration, communication. And I was very happy to see a lot of the twenty-first century skills got called out in the strategic planning. Um, I'm very happy to see the discussion of increasing hands-on projects, real-life learning, because all these things are important to set our, our kids up for success in the future economy. Um, I also hope to see all the factors that lead to a successful implementation can be sufficiently considered, such as the teacher professional development, community engagement, and also sharing our lessons and learning at state and even national platform. I know we can do that. Um, it, it, it's a lot to ask and it's harder done than said. But let's not let the sometimes dull realities and constraints thwart our pursuit of the North Star. It's really the bold vision that will make eventual difference. Um, when I was in London for a work meeting back in February, an American attendee had a comment about her school board, a bunch of people who have nothing else to do. And of course, she didn't realize that I, I, I am a board member. Um, so I laughed and said, well, that's definitely not our board. Our board is full of successful professionals, very busy moms and dads and grandparents and young rising politicians. We have everything else to do. The only reason, the only reason we are here is because we care. And after today, I will still care a lot about our community. Our families spent the last sixteen years in Brandon Farms. So I will find ways to keep the connection with our community. And I truly know that our district is in great hands. I also urge members of the Asian and Pacific Island backgrounds to apply to fill the vacancy. I loved, as we have so much to contribute to our board and to community. Finally, I would like to thank all of you in the room and out there who voted for me, supported me, and guided me over the last eighteen months. I would also want to thank my husband and two boys for making things work at home when I cannot be around due to board duties. Um, I will see you around and truly grateful for everything. Thank you.
While Dr. Liu is, um, making the rounds, I just want to underscore a, a particular point, um, in her departure. And that is that I know we, we all work really hard to, um, pave the way for our personal lives to be able to contribute here on the school board. And I know in speaking with Dr. Liu that her family had some pretty challenging decisions about, um, why they wanted to leave the district. And, um, I, I only want to say, because, you know, she made her statement. But when we say we want to leave space for all our children, we mean it. And we want to consider who we are to the folks who, um, move here for education, for personal reasons, for work, for whatever brings us here. When we are not a welcoming community, we lose people. So I just want to underscore that, Dr. Liu, your family will be missed. And we cannot allow ourselves to, um, not leave space for people. Thank you. Okay. All right. Moving on, um, we're going to go ahead. Moving on, we're going to go ahead and move past whole business, but move on to committee updates. Who's doing finance?
I will.
Gotcha. Finance and facilities. All right. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. Good evening. So just to write some notes back from our finance committee meeting. We talked about four or five different items. First item we talked about was just the ongoing discussion after we rounded out the kindergarten and paraprofessional coverage issue. I know we've already addressed this, so we don't need to spend much time on it. But I think the one big takeaway there is, as we as a community, as we as a district, as we as a board are thinking about per-people costs and that discussion, these types of tough decisions sometimes come about and play a factor into what that per-people cost ends up being. We talked into, we transitioned, I'm sorry, into another discussion on how the state collects data. Whoops, sorry about that. Better? Okay. We transitioned into another discussion about how the state collects data on a whole plethora of topics relevant to districts and cost structures, class sizes, things of that nature. After we learned about the data, we realized while there is a lot of data available, it will be a tall task to pull together. But the finance committee is looking at potential options on how we can do that over the summer, which we think is going to be good as we're talking more broadly to the community about costs and the costs that we incur, whether it be on a per-people basis or other means. We talked a little bit about the board meeting agenda, including a large number of the administrative reorganization things that we're already talking about that are going to be on the agenda tonight. We talked about some cost items important to us. Some are optional. Many are going to warrant a lot of discussion, discussion that we're going to all need to have as a board, all need to have as a community as we move into this very tight budget year. I think for those of you who follow the Board of Education meetings closely, many of us on the board, as well as Rosetta Administration, have talked a lot about this. And this is going to be something that we need to be more considerate of moving forward for all the reasons we discussed. One of the things we did talk about was a discussion we want to have with the Climate Action Committee, where when we think about certain programs that the district has, what sort of potential cost increment that is. And rather than it be a, it costs something, therefore, we're not going to do it, we were thinking about this rather as, hey, let's be strategic, let's try to be complex thinkers that if we want to do something, we have to think as well as what the cost is for us to be able to do it, which I think is a really good opportunity for our students and the student population to become better thinkers along the way. On the facility side of things, we talked about some AC issues in Tollgate, which I think are being addressed. We talked a lot about items like Hopeful Township forcing us to remove forty trees under threat of fine, which we're going to have to do if we haven't already. We talked a little bit about sewer line repair, excuse me, at the Timber Lane School. And good news is, Hopeful Elementary, the chiller is up and running, which is a positive. So there we go. Other than that, I think I hit everything. Happy to answer any questions that anybody may have. Is this loud or no?
It's now.
I'm usually loud.
You have to put it right near.
Okay, I guess I'm going up real close.
Yeah. Just if you could quickly clarify the HVAC issue that just popped up. So much like what happened. It went out and burned and smoked up the whole office in the school, and we had to evacuate. The kids had a little adventure, but we don't have air in the main office at Bear, and some of the other areas are limping along. But luckily, school is out tomorrow, so, you know, we'll get through the half-day. And of course, it's the hottest day in the history, but we'll get through it. The kids thought it was a lot of fun, though. They got to see the. Yeah. Dr. Tris doesn't want to see the fire. Yeah, we're done with the fire. Does anyone have any additional questions for finance and facilities? Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to you again, Mark for Personnel.
Let's try this again.
Woo, there you go.
Look at that. Okay, so we met prior to this meeting, as we normally do. Going to keep this very brief. This is the time of the year where we do a lot of the normalized appointments and approvals and agreements. So as you take a look at the board agenda, we'll be going through them. We also had some other ancillary discussions about some of the appointments, but overall, all of this will be taken care of here in the next couple of minutes. Any questions? That's quick.
That is very quick. So there are a lot of items in the mini-pages in the actual agenda, so for the audience, you can certainly reference there. But we need a first and second to pass the personnel items, and we'll take a roll call vote following.
Don't move.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Calavita.
Mr. Capadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes. Thank you. Make a person else to go to paperless.
I know.
Only, yeah. If this is any indication, right? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move us on to our policy items. Oh, sorry. Let me, EdCom, sorry. Couldn't get past all that personnel stuff there. Miss Smith.
All right. I'm going to give the report for EdCom that Dr. Lu had shared, and I just want to say thank you again for all of her hard work. She will be missed. So we had the elementary teacher leaders present about, to review their first year in the district, and their focus was really in three areas: professional development, resource management, and curricular revisions. They've continued to do a successful and effective job in the elementary world, and we are very excited to have those positions. And we talked about next year's goals with them, specifically focusing again on those three areas, especially bringing in more professional development to our faculty. Mr. Wilthing, the principal in charge of STEM, came to speak about the new STEAM Exploratory, which is going to be an interdisciplinary course that focuses on literacy, math, science, and social studies with technology. We are going to be utilizing the Next Generation Science Standards Framework, and we are going to identify elements and objectives that are overarching to bring in the different interdisciplinary I spoke about a EdReports contract that I was proposing to approve. We would like to work with EdReports, who is a non-biased organization that reviews materials to see how they are aligned with standards. It's an unbiased process, and we wanted to bring them in to help us to vet and look at elementary language arts programs for next year. We will be using Title II funds to support this, and this would be a nine-month contract, hopefully starting in July or August. And at the end, we will hopefully have selected a ELA program that we fit the needs of our district. And then finally, we had, we talked about the board approval of just some items that the NJDOE require, including the Three-Year Language Instruction Educational Program, Three-Year Plan, the ARP Safe Return to School Plan, and the Remote Learning Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Politzis. Any questions from the board? Thank you. All right, moving on to community relations. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, right. The meeting last Thursday, I guess it was, yeah, was, it started out with the fellows from the finance committee talking about how the community was doing with the referendum and some of the concerns that we had, so we're going to be working through those and providing the kinds of FAQ and training stuff that we need to get it straightened out. The rest of the meeting, however, was where I'm really interested, and that's in terms of, not that I'm not interested about the referendum, but the idea of empowering students is really, really, I think, a very primary focus for me. And we did a little bit of talking. We know we have a lot to do in that, but the community is going to be a big part of our understanding that and being part of how it plays out in our rollout of the whole, essentially, the five goals that we're going to be dealing with in the coming years. There's a list in our, I don't know if you have it back there, but there's a list of possible ways for us to think about it. We'll be talking about it during the summer and certainly getting into it. For example, self-determination theory, self-awareness, master orientation, locus of control, SEL, self-direction, decision-making, constructive and social constructive learning. The list goes on. But it will be, I think, an exciting time, and I think it'll be a beneficial time in terms of what we can do for the school, the children in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any questions from the board at large?
On finances.
There was no arm wrestling in that meeting, I promise. That was a good meeting. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to SEL, and you will be representing the...
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So at our SEL meeting, we actually had two guests. Our first guest was Ms. Suzanne Horsley, who is one of our, she's our wellness teacher at Tollgate. She spoke to our committee about her process with facilitating groups, group leaders, to help coordinate, plan and coordinate field day. And she talked about how this experience starts with the fifth graders in September and culminates at their field day. And then last, well, right before our SEL meeting, these group leaders, the groups came in and talked about their experiences in working together to plan and to problem-solve. And it was a true example of SEL at its best, as far as working together to create a really great experience for the other students in the school. So that was really wonderful. We talked about, Dr. Beth Hoffman came, she leads our SEL District Committee, just about the things that we've accomplished this year and also looking towards next year, some of the planning that's in place that includes continuing implementing character-strong curriculum throughout kindergarten through eighth grade, nurtured heart, training for parents and staff, leadership core at the secondary level, team building through our wellness activities, support groups through our counseling involving grief, divorce, anxiety, and social skills. And we're going to be exploring diversity groups through affinity, continuing our collaborations with comprehensive mental health, RSM psychology, and also Rutgers, Samantha Awadala, Rutgers Clinician. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just had a comment to add, because I really appreciated Ms. Horsley's presentation. And I think one of the things I found most impressive about it was how she really engaged the fifth graders to role-model these SEL skills for the younger students. And I thought it was just such a beautiful example of these older kids really internalizing and demonstrating these skills when they're asterized at the occasion. So I just, I really appreciate her coming to speak to us about that.
I'm going to suggest that to Ms. Horsley. After they're done, they present and they engage in... Moving on to policy, Dr. Liliston.
Okay. So the policy committee met on Friday, June 14. We have two policies up for first reading, one policy and two regs up for first reading abolishment, and then four sets of policies and regulations up for second reading. So can I have a motion in a second to move policies 2421 Career and Technical Education, 5841 Secret Societies for First Reading, and Regulation 2421 Vocational Technical Education and Policy and Regulation 5538 Drug, Random Drug Testing for First Reading Abolishment.
Motion. Second.
Okay, great. So the two policies up for first reading, these are both revised policies, and you saw that there are just minor revisions here. So for 2421, this is career and technical education, and this policy really just ensures that the school district makes a program of career and technical education available to its students in accordance with state code. So the idea is career and technical education can offer interested students a pathway to really build practical, job-oriented skills. This was last revised by the board in April 2009. So if you look at the document, we've just made a few minor revisions to this policy. So we've replaced the term vocational with career throughout. Revisions provide additional detail regarding the purpose of offering career and technical education, which is really to provide students with opportunities to explore and prepare for different career paths, different career options. On page two, I'll just draw your attention to the area where we have to do a little check. So we're required to indicate the mechanism through which we, as a district, offer career and technical education. And we've selected option three here because our school district offers both county vocational school options and local career and technical education programs. And we've also indicated that our career and technical education programs are open to students in grades nine through 12. Any questions, concerns, additions from the committee members? Nope? Okay, so we'll move on. So the next policy here is 5841 Secret Societies. And so this policy prohibits secret societies, which are defined, sounds a little old-school, but really, it's just student organizations that aren't approved by the principal or they're designated and that aren't open to all students per state code. So this was also last revised by the board in April 2009. So there's just one minor revision on this policy, which removes the list of protected categories and replaces the list with the expanded list, citing back to state code.
The board approved the two policies. I think it's policies that the principal does, they do, but then the board also...
Okay. So moving on to the policies up for first reading abolishment. So first, we have Regulation 2421, which is vocational technical education. This sort of moves in tandem with the policy we just discussed. So we're recommending that we abolish this per guidance from Strauss ESME, because the details in this regulation are not required. And then next, you'll see here, Policy and Regulation 5538 Random Drug Testing. So we're moving this for first read abolishment. We actually discussed this policy and regulation in depth during the March Policy Committee meeting and then later during the full board meeting. So we're bringing this policy and regulation for abolishment now to align with the end of this school year. So again, just a brief overview here, these were adopted by the Board of Education in 2018. So in the past school year, currently, all high school students who participate in athletics, co-curricular activities have been granted parking permits for on-campus parking, or who elect to participate with parental consent are eligible for random drug testing. And these testing procedures are implemented by a third-party vendor. So the policy committee decided to revisit this policy and regulation based on external societal shifts that we've been experiencing, as well as our own internal data about the effectiveness of this program. So I think the first thing that I'll note here is that since this policy was first implemented, we've actually seen the legalization of marijuana in New Jersey and really a corresponding change in attitudes towards marijuana. We have seen sort of a corresponding increase in positive test results over the past several years, but every student but one has tested positive for marijuana or THC use only. These students are often testing positive at really low thresholds, likely indicating that it's infrequent recreational use, as opposed to a more severe substance use disorder. So what this means operationally is that we're really seeing time and resources like counseling diverted from students who have more severe substance use disorders to those who are using marijuana infrequently or recreationally in order to comply with the language of the regulation. I think the second thing to note is that while the initial intention of this program was to identify students in need and to really connect... intention of this program was to identify students in need and to really connect them to supportive services, the district has found that they're more successful in identifying students with severe substance use disorders through other means like self-referrals and referrals through teachers and friends. And our student assistance counselor shared with us that the vast majority of students who were identified through the program that have a significant need for substance use disorder services had already been known to the school. Last, I will say that the evidence base around random drug testing in schools has built over the past few decades and since we implemented this policy. And I think the research is really telling us that these types of programs have very little or no impact in actually deterring substance use. And the American Academy of Pediatrics has opposed random drug testing of students since 2015 based on the lack of evidence. So with input from the district's Drug and Alcohol Committee and other stakeholders, the school district really has been shifting towards a more educational and supportive approach to preventing substance use among our students. We've completed a full audit of our substance use curriculum, and we're addressing areas where we think that there might be gaps in the curriculum. And we know that positive school climates from the research are protective factors against substance use, and our district continues to put a lot of focus and energy on building a positive school environment. So taking all this into consideration, we are proposing to abolish this policy and regulation. So I'll just stop there and see if any of my policy committee members have anything to add.
I've said it in several board meetings before, but as a sitting member of the policy committee, I'm really grateful for us moving in this direction as a district. Our random drug testing policy costs us money. It is not working for our students. And to be frank, in the way that it's implemented, it's coercive to our students. It infringes on their civil liberties by holding parking over their heads, by limiting their ability to participate in extracurricular activities, and other activities that would effectively deter drug use. We're saying you have to opt into this program, or you can't effectively be a part of our HRIC community. So I'm really grateful that we're moving in this direction. Ms. Lilston talked a lot about the studies and the research centered around the ineffectiveness of random drug testing. So it's not only anecdotal that we're seeing here in Hopewell, it's across the nation, and it's a step in the right direction for our district.
Any questions or concerns from my fellow board members? Is Alex?
All right. So I'll keep it brief since I'm over the phone. I am going to be voting for abolishing this policy. And I know that when it comes to a lot of the policy votes that we take, a lot of them can be fairly routine. I just want to highlight of course that this is a very principled vote for me. I've felt pretty much since the beginning, since way before I was on the board, that this was a misguided policy. We've since had data to show it. I did have a much longer statement prepared, but not going to attempt to read it over the phone and for folks who are interested. I'm very happy to share the reasons why I think it's misguided, but I did want to highlight that I know that this is an issue that people, that some people will disagree with me with, and I do respect their opinion. For me, this is going to be a very, very principled vote to abolish this policy.
Thank you, Alex. Mark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thanks. Dr. Lilston, thank you, I think, for this particular topic. You've helped educate me quite a bit in thinking differently about it. Very, very challenging vote for me coming up here. I am a little bit torn on this one for a whole plethora of reasons. I think that the conversations we've had as a board, conversations we've had as a community, when it comes to data, when it comes to the quantitative, qualitative, I think there's a lot of new that still exists in this particular topic. I can appreciate the opinions that have happened about this topic, especially given a lot of the recent legalization of things in our state on a federal level, schedule changes, other states. I've shared this with the board. I'll continue to share it with the community. I think that when it comes to drug legalization in general, we do not yet know what we do not yet know. And that is a scary thing for a lot of reasons. I came on the board with the sole intent and purpose of trying to be able to create an environment that is as good as it can be for the children, for the kids. That means that sometimes I'm going to probably be a voice that may disagree with folks on certain topics. This is one where I probably will disagree, that I don't think that the abolishment of this is probably the right move. I would hope that maybe we consider instead of an abolishment, some sort of amendment that can be more in tune with your feedback, which I think is really great. But I just wanted to share that publicly. But more importantly, Dr. Lilston, I appreciate just you being able to educate me a lot more along the way. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed or abstaining?
Opposed.
Those policies and motions passed. Okay. Now moving on to second reading here. Can I have a motion in second to move Policy 1523 Comprehensive Equity Plan, Policy 5550 Disaffected Students, Regulation 550 Disaffected Students, Policy 5116 Education of Homeless Children Youth, and Regulation 5116, and Policy and Regulation 5111 Eligibility of Resident Non-Resident Students for Second Reading?
Go move. Second.
Okay, great. So we'll be, we'll be brief here because we discussed these in depth at our last meeting. But I did just want to point out some revisions that we made to two of the policies between the meetings. So Dr. Wilson, I want to thank you very much for the comments that you shared. Dr. Wilson sent comments on the Comprehensive Equity Plan policy, as well as the Disaffected Students policy. And so you'll see some revisions there that are highlighted. Under the Comprehensive Equity Plan, we updated the language to indicate that the needs assessment should review barriers to achieving equity in the learning environment in addition to educational activities and programs. And we also indicated that the CEP should focus not just on achievement patterns, but also positive and equitable social emotional outcomes. For 550, the current language in the policy, I think your note was that it's deficit focused. And so we wanted to shift that to the extent possible. And where you'll see revisions in that policy, we've clarified that when a disaffected student is identified and referred to the intervention and referral team, they're required in collaboration with the teacher to really develop an asset-based support plan that's focused on promoting self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, social awareness, and responsible decision-making. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the policies that are up for second reading? Okay.
Because it's final. Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick? He said yes. Mr. Slotman?
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy?
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia?
Yes.
Dr. Lilston?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Can I add just one more update from the policy committee, maybe? The only other update I'll add is that we did discuss the dress code policy. The school does not currently have a dress code policy for teachers and staff. We decided to table discussion of that policy until the fall, when we can engage teachers, potentially an advisory board or a focus group of teachers, to help advise us on that matter and to ensure that their voices are heard and incorporated into the policy. So look for that in the fall.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to go into second public comment. All right, change of written agenda. So are there any new business items? Other than you want to make a candidate announcement?
So just as a continuation of the last month's new business, there will be five open board seats on the ballot this year. There'll be one three-year term in Pennington Borough. There'll be, bear with me here, two three-year terms in Hopewell Township, one two-year term in Hopewell Township, and one one-year term in Hopewell Township. I'll say it again. Two three-year terms, one two-year term, and one one-year term in Hopewell Township. Anyone who's interested needs to fill out a nominating petition that can be obtained in my office or at the Mercer County Election Office downtown. Petitions must be to that office, not my office, by July 29, 2024 at 4:00 PM to be eligible to be placed on the ballot for the November election. That includes Dr. Lou's position that we, she just vacated. Okay. The board, and again, a new, new business, the board will be coming up with a date to interview candidates to fill Dr. Lou's position from now or from whatever appointed until December 31, when that position would expire, that person would actually, if they wanted to continue, would have to be placed on the ballot through a nominating petition. The board now has 65 days from the date of, the date of Dr. Lou's letter to the board to fill the position.
Just, I was just gonna say.
I have a question on that one. If we just look at, if we just look at the calendar, we're going to be asking folks to apply for a board position for one or two board meeting cycles. Having been on the board and sort of having been a new person on the board, and having experienced how long it takes to kind of get into the swing of things, right, and start understanding all the intricacies of what's going on, I don't see anyone being highly effective in one or two meeting cycles, or even immediately effective, right? So I don't know if we have any flexibility to fill that position or not, but if we do, then I would actually put it out to the board members to see if that's something we even want to do. Because 60 days from now is going to be, you know, we're going to be in the fall, we're going to be two months from the November election.
Understood. Unfortunately, there is no flexibility. The 65 days is your flexibility. So you must, you must appoint, you must follow your board policy, and advertise, and interview, and appoint. We could do it, you know, we don't have to take 65 days. That's the maximum you're allowed. So, you know, we'll get the ad in the paper, and we'll, you know, collectively we'll come up with a date to interview, and go from there.
Have to do it. We have to do it. And, you know, hopefully, we have folks who are not just willing to join the board for a couple of months, but who will, but who also then have their names on the ballot for some of the open positions out there because, so that we can get some continuity in that position.
Yes, that's what we will hope. Spread the word off. Thank you, Alex. I don't want to step over any other comments regarding that. Okay, before we move into public comment, we'll just ask for a first and second for June and July calendars before we do all our meetings.
John. We got John.
Oh, John, on second. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Meetings.
Well, I guess we'll start with finance at the 8th. The July 8th work, people away. July 8th. Meeting's on the 15th, that's. Sure. Love it. What? Do you want to zoom? You want to zoom it?
Sure.
Okay, 8:00 AM on the 8th. 8:00 AM. I think Mark has a conflict in the evening. That's where we're, you know, we're going to alter it for this month.
You heard it, Al.
There you go. All right, we got, we'll do personnel 6:15 on the 15th. Is that what you want? Six? Or is it six? Six. Well, you have SEL on the calendar already on the 10th.
13th at 11:00 AM? Oh, 10th. Oh, okay, 10th at 11:00 AM.
10's fine.
7, 10, at 10.
Doctor. 10, that's 10 o'clock? 10 at 10, all right.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Any opposed or abstaining? You wanted to join. Okay. Calendar's passed for June and July. Now, we will go back to public comment, our second and final public comment for the evening. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask you to sign in prior to speaking at the podium. This will assist us with our record-keeping, and as always, our timekeeper is over to my left. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Kate Ham, Pennington, New Jersey. You all know that I am no stranger here, but I felt compelled to speak after the strategic plan presentation, Dr. Lou's announcement, and your comments, President William Scagliano. But just a brief word on something mentioned by you, Mr. Peters. While I understand the need to be fiscally responsible and the decision to alter the use of kindergarten assistance, it goes without saying that the supports provided by these individuals at the start of many youth's education contributes to the uniqueness and success in this district. My hope is that the door is not closed to the possibility of revisiting this modification should the need arise. As stated by the field representative, the goals and objectives in the strategic plan are lofty yet attainable. A couple pieces caught my attention. Goal number two, facilities and finance. My hope is that access to our buildings and grounds is universal and equitable. It's no secret that I often comment about the not easily accessible and small venue we have here at the board office. In her parting comments, Dr. Lou referenced seeking more participation and attendance from the community. Maybe a larger and easier access venue might be a way to start. Goal number four, health and wellness. I believe that the development of a proactive health and wellness program as it pertains to mental health includes arming the community with knowledge and having the ability to provide support and resources. In a recent, published today, article, the numbers released show an astounding increase in ER visits for youth. This data is from a 2022 survey. Young women ages 15 to 17 have visited the ER twice as much for self-harm since 2009, but visits for young women ages 10 to 14 have increased by five times as much. Almost seven years ago, Mercer County superintendents came together in a call to action due to an increase in the loss of youth lives. While the pandemic curbed and delayed progress, it's my hope to see an increase in resources and supports available to our youth, their families, and the community. To follow up on your comments, President William Scagliano, it is important for our community members to not only feel seen but to be heard. It is vital to hold space for all community members. Everyone's input is valuable. While Dr. Lou's plea was to having the Asian-American community seen, I would direct your attention to include other communities not always seen and heard. That includes our single-parent families, our families of varying socioeconomic backgrounds, and our families of individuals with differing needs. My hope is that you, the board, and the administration are willing to walk the talk and not only hear what the community has to say, but also listen, as hearing and listening are two different things.
Any other public comments?
Hi, folks. My name is Gabriel Dominguez. I'm a father of two kids at Hopewell Elementary School, and I have recently moved to New Jersey from Utah in the San Francisco Bay Area a couple of years ago, and I've been really excited about the amazing natural wonders you have here. The Delaware River, the Jersey Shore is such a huge deal to me. I'm into it. And I was also really heartened to move, coming from Utah, where I was educated as a kid, to a school district that had an environmental stewardship statement on its website. That is a huge uphill battle where I grew up. And so to see that you guys are committed to mobilizing our students, staff, and the wider community by providing them with the knowledge and skills to envision and create an environmentally just and sustainable future. I was just like, this one would never be written on a website in Orem, Utah, where I grew up. And I love Orem, and I love the people there, but it was heartening. And then to hear that there's a climate change education mandate in this state, that this state is trying to lead the way in sounding the alarm and helping our kids become acclimated to a climate that is in crisis. It was encouraging to me. So as a co-founding member of the EcoPTO, I want to help, I want to help fan the flames of positivity in this regard, for social justice, for ecological justice. And I know we're all really excited in the EcoPTO to continue to recruit more people, school board members, anyone who feels like we need to be prioritizing the existing budget, finding more resources, finding, drawing from the talent, the amazing talent in this amazing area to enact our mission, which is all-state again, as Kristen said earlier, to ensure that Hopewell Valley Regional School District students receive a public education that prioritizes ecojustice within the curriculum and within the school day. And what does ecojustice mean? Justice is, as Dr. Cornel West would say, is just what love looks like in public. And if there's one thing that we need more of in this world, it is love in public, and that's ecological and that is social. We, we want to avail our community and our students of the healing powers of nature, of the many career opportunities that are available through saving the world, and they're not always paid well, but they are the most important jobs that we could be working on. And also encouraging students to find their own initiative and fanning their own personal flames, Mike Wilson. We're just appreciating that, their autonomous visions for what a more beautiful world looks like. Thanks.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Treese, administrators, fellow administrators. I just wanted to stand today and offer gratitude to the school board, to the educators and administrators in this district for your support of a recent initiative that we've heard about earlier tonight called LGBTQ301. For those of you who may be new to this conversation. Mic check. For those of you who may be new to this conversation and may not be familiar with this initiative, it was actually born in 2020. I sat on a panel as a graduate of, graduate of this school district that was facilitated by Dr. Treese. I sat there with my daughter, I sat there with Drew, I sat there with Thayer, and several other folks, both currently enrolled at the time and graduates of the district, having conversations, and these are all folks who were seated in some manner of diversity. And it was a beautiful conversation about the ways in which educators can be impactful, particularly for those kids. And we all sat up there offering lots of counsel and advice. And after that, I felt really convicted because I asked myself, as the mother of a trans daughter, what was I actually doing? Like, what was I actually doing besides caring for my child? And I realized in that moment that preparing my child for the world was not going to be enough, that I needed to be working really hard at creating a world that was prepared to receive my child. We have now been at this, this was the third iteration of this event. I have been grateful for the support of the district, the support of the municipal alliance, and the ways in which they have made this process smoother for me than my friends who are doing this work in other communities. So I also wanted to be clear, very clear, about what the mission is for this event. It is centered in LGBTQ advocacy, and it is centered in informing the public about the issues faced by queer youth. That's it. That's what it's about. It's about supporting those children and the people that love them. And so I thank you for all the ways in which you did that by supporting this event and the ways in which you do that on a regular basis.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing, oh.
Kristen Broderick here, co-founder of EcoPTO. I don't have anything prepared per se, but I just, I want to use this as an opportunity, specifically a learning opportunity for myself. But I recently found out about a change in a, so Rutgers University provided a funding opportunity for, and the board had agreed to a one-year pilot program. It was an AmeriCorps member, and she was teaching for the year on climate action and food waste. And I'm not here to ask for a change or to challenge the decision per se for the, for the role to return, but I do feel compelled to share just some interesting facts that I found out through just being more curious about this role. Because at the end of the day, it is a person that didn't cost any money financially. I know that there's a lot of resources that go into having to supervise a more novice person in our district. But I just, what I found out, I thought was really interesting, that we were, out of eight schools that had signed on to this pilot program, we were the last ones to sign on, which essentially meant we were the last district to choose someone for that role. And so my encouragement is that if, if there is an opportunity to reconsider having this free role that will support the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan and even potentially support the STEAM exploratory role, that there's an opportunity to potentially, to not only interview the person for the role, but have it be someone that is more skilled and comfortable in a classroom setting that I think we just, you know, last, last one at the, at the, at the ballgame. I, I think, I think we could maybe have a second chance here. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Treese, anything you would like to cover?
I, speakers. The first thing is, there was, thank you. Maximize our budget to meet the needs that we know that we have in mental health and paraprofessionals, which we need lots of. And we talked about the larger venue, you know, moving that space, working on our sound system in that space in this one so that we can hear. And we definitely want folks to come out to our meetings. And also, if you are very busy and you can't, we're hoping that you're viewing our meetings, and we do put the recordings up for those who can attend, because daycare is tough for folks as well, when you have these meetings at night. But we value your feedback as a community. Please, please email us if you ever have a question and you see something on a board meeting that you really want more information on. Really looking forward to partnering with the EcoPTO, where you are going to be a huge help as we put these things in, which we've spent a lot of money over the years, that we're recruiting parents to maintain them, so we don't have to tear them down. That is where we're finding the biggest gap is. We build these outdoor spaces, and the maintenance of them becomes prohibitive. But we are going to continue to work with you, and also Jennifer Moore with Free and Open Space, who is talking to us about some of our facility choices as well. And maybe even working with, helping us find some funding for that, which I'm very excited about. And then finally, the Rutgers AmeriCorps teacher. I'm not sure where we came in, when we were offered it, we jumped on it. Their agreement was for a year, because our STEAM facilitators are coming back, so I negotiate, and we were offered a year. They were able to find more funding and add on another year, but the plan was always only a year. It was approved through the Education Program Committee. And I negotiated not only the teacher working with us, who was a very new teacher, and you don't get to kind of interview them, you get who's available. And sometimes they leave for, for new jobs. And she worked very hard, and she helped us, because she did leave for a new job. And she worked very hard with us with writing grants and was able to get money for Stony Brook and Hopewell Elementary, which is the two places we piloted the curriculum, and we negotiated access to the curriculum for free. So now our STEM facilitators have that curriculum to use, and Rutgers got the data they needed to pilot the curriculum, which was the initial intent. Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to say something about the hiring of that position, and it wasn't because we were late to the ballgame. It was just that there were hiring constraints with people who had interviewed for the position and just the distance that it was to Hopewell and from where they live. So that was a huge constraint, and so that was probably why we were one of the last ones to find the AmeriCorps volunteer that actually worked out. So it wasn't anything from the district being unsure.
I just wanted to make two quick statements. Firstly, to Mr. Dominguez's point, I think it's great that we have a more focus on ecojustice in our district. I think investing in green infrastructure and making sure that our students are able to learn outside. I know that was something that was brought up in the March Strategic Planning Meeting. Just something as simple as that can really go a long way in making sure that our students succeed and are healthy, both physically and mentally. So I'm really excited to collaborate with the EcoPTO in the coming months and see how the work has fleshed out. And to address Ms. Former Hogan's points about the LGBTQ301 event, I really do just want to express my heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for the students, parents, and organizers who had the courage to put that event together. It was a great success. I mean, the courage it takes to create a space for open dialogue and supporting our LGBTQIA+ students often goes unthanked and unseen, and I really do commend the student we had. I know Matt spoke earlier in the first public comment that, you know, that it takes a lot of character, a lot of strength, and a lot of bravery. So I really appreciate the work y'all are doing, and I think we got to, we got to keep moving the needle forward. We got to keep pushing things. And, you know, Hopewell's, we're getting to a point where we're at the forefront on a lot of these issues, and we definitely have our shortcomings, but we're getting there. And I'm really grateful for all the work that our community organizers do. So thank you so much, and just know that as long as I'm on this board, you will always have an advocate, an ally, and a supporter for all of your events. Thank you.
Here, here. And I would like to second that. The work of the community around making sure that all of our students feel welcome is so greatly appreciated. And the board, and myself in particular, considers myself not only an ally, but as a mother of a queer child, personally invested in making sure that this community and this district is a welcome in place. And so there's several allies on this board, and keep up the good work.
So before we close out public comment, I just do want to address a couple of items. One is seconding the, seconding or thirding the acknowledgement of the 301. But I want to kind of broaden the opportunity. But I, I want to kind of broaden the opportunity to comment on any event that the school board might, uh, sponsor or hold a space for. We do this for all of our kids, right? This particular, um, event had our students centered, um, for community members, uh, leading the way as advocates and support for the structure. And our Hopewell Youth Alliance absolutely brings a really broad perspective of different facets of the community. That's how they, the whole idea of the alliance is to bring all stakeholders who care about our youth to the table on a monthly basis. And so they participated in the sponsoring the 301 activity and they, uh, as of the two years Heidi's been under the district, two or three. It, it used to, it used to be a part of, uh, the Hopewell, uh, Alliance used to be a township, uh, role, and two or three years ago, it was brought under the umbrella of the district. So there are a lot of different sponsors and advocates for this event in particular. But I want to say that giving our students power to inform, to educate their community and declare how they want to be treated in the, oh, their, in their community is really some of the things that Dr. Wilson really is, is talking to us about, right? Like, having them, um, self-advocate. And so it is sometimes difficult to reposition ourselves as not individuals of that, um, community, but allies of that community and be in the listening seat. Right? Um, and so I, I think the, you know, the LGBTQ301 challenged us in multiple fronts to reposition ourselves as listeners, um, is to, in, in other ways too, in other, uh, diversity positions. So just continue to listen for how we hear our students, allow them to raise their voice and be at the receiving, not the controlling end of the message. So hear, hear to the work being done, but just really, really proud of our students, both, uh, alum and others who, um, were vulnerable and, and were a part of that agenda. The second thing I want to acknowledge is, um, Ms. Ham's, uh, comments. I'm sorry, I lost the permit. You know, really about holding space, and absolutely we hold space. The important thing in acknowledging Dr. Lou was really as, as a model, right? Like, we had an opportunity to have someone, um, who is from the Asian population to sit on our board, and that's a model for how we want to see all of voices show up. So for single parents, maybe they don't have, uh, time to be on the board, but we absolutely want to celebrate and listen for them to be on committees and/or, um, participate or put their hat in the ring to participate, um, or be elected onto the board. So we, we, I personally am committed to hearing all voices, and I would hope that we have both eco diver, uh, economic diversity and different parent and family infrastructures represented on our board. So, um, I, I believe we will continue to give space to that. And, um, I know you will draw attention to us when we're not, but I, I hear you and absolutely want to encourage, um, any model of which we show of minority representation here part of the policy and conversation at the board. So, um, just want to acknowledge that part of your comment.
For our single parents, being part of the board is is a, um, single parents PTO that is, tries to accommodate all the different schedules that that involves, and they have representation in their board president, and their PTO president sits on the district parent council, and we meet monthly.
Okay, any, um, other comments from the rest of the, the board before we close public comment? Okay. Thank you. With that said, public comment is now closed, and, um, I believe we will be taking a first and a second to move into executive session.
Uh, so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. With that, the board moves into executive session. Thank you again to the community for being present, for those who are starting their, uh, are getting that summer vibe. We'll see you in September, but hope to see you all through the summer as well. Take care.